All right, this is the last part of the. All right, good evening. This is the Cortez City Council regular meeting. Today's Tuesday, July 26, 2022, and the time is now 7:30 PM. We'll call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to roll call. Linda?
Keef Hoffer?
Here.
Dehaven?
Here.
Spruill?
Here.
Rainey?
Here.
Yasi?
Here.
Dobree?
Here.
Medina?
Here. All right, note that we do have a quorum tonight. And then I'll ask for approval of the agenda. Would any council members like to make a change the agenda or motion to approve as is?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
May I just call the roll?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay, sorry. A motion made by Councilmember Dehaven and seconded by, was it Rainey?
Dehaven?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Keef Hoffer?
Aye.
Spruill? Medina?
Aye. All right. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The listing under consent agenda is a group of items to be acted on by a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at the time prior to council's vote. The mayor will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have a specific item removed from consent agenda. All right, seeing none. A, approval of the work session special meeting in regular minutes from July 12, 2022. B, approval of the expenditure list for July 26, 2022, city council meeting. Approval of a renewal retail liquor license or liquor store for Marjana Lloyd DBA The Cellar located at 2410 Fairway Drive Suite B, Cortez. B or D, approval of a renewal arts liquor license for the Cortez Cultural Center, Inc., DBA Cortez Cultural Center located at 25 North Main Street, Cortez. E, approval of a renewal tavern liquor license for Cortez Elks Lodge 1789, Inc., DBA Cortez Elks 1789 located at 2100 North Delores Road, Cortez. F, approval of a renewal fermented malt beverage off premises liquor license for Good To Go Stores LLC DBA Good To Go located at 302 West Main Street, Cortez. G, approval of a renewal fermented malt beverage off premises liquor license for Good To Go Stores LLC DBA Good To Go located at 717 South Broadway, Cortez. And H, approval of a change in corporation structure and transfer of ownership for New Hong Kong of Cortez, Inc. located at 332 West Main Street, Cortez.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, motion made by Councilmember Dobree and seconded by Yasi.
Keef Hoffer?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Spruill?
Aye.
Dehaven?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye. All right, we'll move on to public participation. There's no limit in the number of speakers, although public comment will be held and an overall time limit of 30 minutes. So we're starting at 7:35 until 8:05. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. And then just a reminder that we do have comment cards if you want to make a comment, and those just help us. Do we have comment cards? Oh, already here. All right, thank you. Oh, yes, and then for anyone who hasn't been at public comment recently, we have visual cues so you know when your time limit's getting close. And then that way, we don't interrupt your flow by interrupting you when you have 30 seconds left. I'd like to invite up, is it Darrell Graff? So make sure your mic is on with the green light and then start with your name and address.
My name is Darrell Graff. I live at 12130 Road 26. I'm not in the city and I cannot vote for anybody here. But I am a 20-year veteran volunteer firefighter and EMT, and what I came to talk about tonight is your guys' problem. I have, over the last five to seven years, witnessed a degradation of our communications center, i.e. our dispatch center. As in doing training and such with fire department, in order to keep up with safety and current standards, a lot of times, we do studies of line-of-duty deaths. Those that are traumatic, not attributed to a medical problem, there's a common theme that runs in those line-of-duty deaths, and that is a breakdown or failure of communication. A lot of those are a failure of communication led to the situation that caused the death, and at a bare minimum, a breakdown of communication added to the situation that caused the death. We have had a failure in the last several years. We've tried to work with it through other avenues to get dispatch fixed. It's not taking place. It's not happening. We had several calls this weekend. Dispatch won't even answer us. They page us out and then they won't talk to us. So we got called the other night for a person who was wandering down the road. They were lost. We didn't know where they were at. Turns out, everybody knew where they were at except for us, the people they called to come find her, because dispatch failed to relay the information that, no, she's been found, she's safe, she's dry, she's what have you. Also, if there is a failure of communication that directly leads to a line-of-duty death as a firefighter or in the fire service, Lord forbid that ever happen in Monizuma County. At some time, I know it will. I don't know what the city's insurance premium or insurance pays on a death for a firefighter if it can be tied back to their dispatch center, but now I'm also making it your problem. Now it's on the public record that you know. Another caveat to this whole thing is in dispatch, they record the times in which it takes us to respond and arrive on scene. All of that ties back to insurance safety operators rating of these districts. If the ISO rating is not up, your insurance premiums go higher. When dispatch does not record in CAD that we've responded because they're not responding to us, then it doesn't get recorded in ISO. We can go back and listen to the audio recordings, but if it's not recorded in CAD, it's not recorded. And that leads to my insurance premiums going up, and that's all dispatch problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell, for bringing that to our attention. And communication is important, and we don't want to add to the jeopardy of what our first responders are doing. So thank you. And Drew, I'd like to follow up with you on that later then.
We got him, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite Susan up to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Chemnitz. I'm at 511 South Theater. And I just wanted to speak briefly about the general fund in the finance budget and how there was the excess funds in it. And it was briefly talked about spending some of that money on audiovisual equipment. And it's kind of shocking to hear that your equipment lasts 15 years, because usually, that kind of equipment doesn't last that long. And if it's about ready to break down, you really need to replace it. But I would just ask that when you do replace it, that you don't go out and buy the fanciest stuff you can buy, just because we out here, the people are hurting now. I mean, things are just crazy right now. And especially people like me on a fixed, very poor income, it's like there's no room for me to have anything, even the needed things. So I would just ask that when you go out to replace it, and you should, that you kind of look at what's good, but maybe not try to get that really fancy stuff. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you so much for your thoughtful comments, Susan. Do we have any more public commenters? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and move on to, in the agenda, to four presentations. We have none tonight, no public hearings and no unfinished business. So we'll move on to 7A under new business, ordinance number 1308, series 2022, presented by Finance Director Kelly Koska.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I come before you this evening with ordinance number 1308, series 2022, which is essentially the mid-year budget adjustment for the '22 budget. The ordinance includes Appendix B, which you'll note does include the items that were discussed at the previous council meeting. And the AV equipment was removed, which reduced the total amount of this adjustment to $470,044. Does anybody have any questions?
Will there be, will you be approaching us with AV equipment requests in the near future? Any ideas on that?
So that is a possible discussion as we move through the budget for 2023. We'll be, staff will be working on those through the end of August. And as our process, we'll follow the same process that we did last year. Once staff presents their budget to Drew and I, then we'll have one of those funds Saturday meetings where every department head comes and presents their budgets to council. IT department would be one of those included. So it'll be up for discussion again.
And Mayor, Councilmember Keef Hoffer, we are relooking at that. You know, just like Susan said, we want to right-size this. We're trying to do the right things. And we've got a plan on how we're going to progress with that. But by the time we can get to it, it's going to be budget time. Let's just flip it in there.
Can we remind the public when that budget season starts and when they can start looking at that and making their own comments?
So it'll be towards the end of August. I do have a preliminary budget schedule that I'd be happy to share with council. But we don't generally, we generally open that for public comment on the transparency page, which is a part of the CLIRGOF software that we use for our budgeting process. And so it will be towards the end of August when we put that out for comment. We'll need to have a draft, a version of it first. And there is quite a bit of work on the front end for the finance department to do before we even get to that point.
And then the CIP, because this is for, this 135 is for this year, and then we'll add it into the budget next year.
For the community intervention program, it was my understanding that that was a one-time ask from the county, and that as they started that program, that they were supposed to be looking at sources for continued funding. So we can have that discussion also, but I'm not sure exactly where they are on their sustainability plan for that program.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. That's all the questions I had.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve on first reading ordinance number 1308, series 2022, and set for public hearing on August 9, 2022.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Yasi and seconded by Dehaven.
Dobree?
Aye.
Keef Hoffer?
Aye.
Dehaven?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Spruill?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye. All right, we'll move on to 7B, Planning and Zoning Commission Appointment, presented by Rachel Marchbanks. Feedback?
If you could just get one that was in between that size and this size, it'd be just right. Greetings, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I'd like to, well, let me give you some background. The Planning and Zoning Commission makes recommendations to the city councils, you know, by determining matters related to zoning, planning, and subdivision control, as well as enforcing the comprehensive plan for the physical development of the city. The commission consists of five resident members appointed by the city and four ex officio members without voting power consisting of the city manager, the zoning administrator, the city engineer, and the mayor. The commission meets the first Tuesday of each month at 6:30 in the council chambers at City Hall. Currently, there is a vacancy that was advertised in the Cortez Journal and on the city's website in June. We received one application. The city council held the interview at its July 12 work session. Katrina Weiss is currently a member, is who applied, and she is currently a member of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. As mentioned in her letter to apply, she is, she has experience as an insurance agent. She also worked as an environmental director for a city in New Mexico. She has supervised a code enforcement division and oversaw a city beautification project. She has a master's degree and a couple of professional designations. It is our staff recommendation that the council appoint Katrina Weiss to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I just had a question about our terms for the, for planning and zoning. And since Ms. Weiss is being appointed to fill a vacancy, does, would her term start now, or is it completing a previous term? Or where are we on the terms that way?
Actually, that's a, that is a good question. I will have to check into that.
Traditionally, how we have done that, Councilmember Dobree, is they start from the date they're appointed, and they begin anew. We can do it however you'd like, but that's how we usually do. And her appointment to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals may change, because there can only be two planning and zoning members. And currently, with her appointment, that would make three. So between the three of them, they'll have to decide who remains.
Well, so for P and Z, are the terms two years?
Two years.
Two? Okay, thank you.
I actually had a question too about the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. So there are two positions that can be both, correct?
Yes.
And maybe this is a general question you might not know, but the answer to, is sort of the idea that those folks might have some of the background information because they are on planning and zoning? So if an issue were to come up, they can maybe clarify some, some understanding about that particular issue?
I think yes. Also, the planning and zoning members have an understanding of city code and land use code policies. So I think that's helpful in a Board of Appeal Adjustment situation.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Katrina Weiss to a two-year term to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Dobree and seconded by Keef Hoffer.
Rainey?
Aye.
Spruill?
Aye.
Dehaven?
Aye.
Keef Hoffer?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye. All right, thank you so much for your willingness to dedicate this time to be on our board. I'm personally excited about your background. I think that'll be an asset, especially as we hopefully move forward with updating the land use code. All right, we'll move on to 7C, bid results for the 2022 Street Improvement Project, presented by Brian Peckins, our Director of Public Works.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we're going to go over the bid results for the 2022 Street Improvement Project. The City of Cortez has an annual budget in the Street Capital Fund for street improvements. The streets affected by this year's project are Harrison and Monizuma will have Mill and Phil, Akoma, Melrose, and Cottonwood Streets and Cornet Heights will have double chip seal and fog coat, and Monoloris Avenue and the Rec Center parking lot will have single chip seal with fog coat. In addition, there will be approximately 230 square yards of asphalt patching in various locations throughout the city. This street improvement project will be almost an additional mile of street improvements, so we're excited about that. The city's Public Works Department prepared the bid plans and specifications for this project and held a pre-bid meeting on July 8 with all interested prospective bidders. The bids were opened on 15 July with only one bid being received from Dave and Lana Waters at $536,038.74. Public Works recommends awarding the 2022 Street Improvement Project to Dave and Lana Waters Incorporated in the amount of $536,038.74. The monies are available in the Street Capital Fund.
So Brian, D and L Construction is currently doing the work in front of the hospital and the school. How's that been going? Are we satisfied with that work?
Good. Sligo is, they're just about done. I think Drew is going to mention that later, but we may open as early as tomorrow. Sligo, that's ahead of schedule. Mildred is coming along. There was some problems with some of the water taps, but that should be done within another month or so. So they're doing really good work. I'm very happy about that. We did have, at the pre-bid meeting, we had four companies attend, but I think the problem was that there was not enough chip seal, chips available. And, you know, so we got one bid and it was within our budget, so.
These streets, Akoma, Melrose, Cottonwood, and Monoloris, are some of those, are those all already paved, or some of those gravel turning into chip seal?
I think those are all paved.
Okay. I was surprised to see the Rec Center parking lot on there, as I feel like that work was just recently done within the last few years.
Yeah, and there were some problems with the work that was done. And for whatever reason, they weren't held accountable. And so there'd be some patchwork and then, and then the chip seal. So, yeah, it shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have needed to be repaired that quickly, but.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right, any more discussion or?
Yes. I'm sorry, Brian. I missed when will this construction start on Akoma and Monoloris and Melrose?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
When does the work on this Monoloris area start?
Probably, you know, we, we have to have the bid, you know, the pre-bid meeting and the notice to proceed, probably about another month, within a month.
A month, okay.
Thank you.
This may be a little naive on my part, not knowing the answer, but when somebody does a chip and seal or does some construction, there is some sort of warranty, I'm sure. What happened with the Rec Center and will it happen with Waters and Dave and Lana? Do we have something in place where their paving was not up to standard?
Well, sure, we have a contract. And I'm not sure, you know, the Rec Center, you know, that happened before I got here. I'm not sure whether it was, you know, exactly what the, what the issues were, but there were some things that the contractor was not held accountable for, and so we have to go back and redo it. But that's generally not the case. Generally, we can hold the contractor to the standard we have in the contract.
This might be a silly question, but it's not the same contractor, is it? That's the last project?
I don't know. I would have to check who did the Rec Center before. I don't know that offhand.
Mayor and council, if I can just interject here, that is on our list to research, and I'll report back to council on what that's all about, you know, and what happened before. We don't know that tonight, but I highly doubt it was Dave and Lana. But, you know, we will research and get back, just to make sure that we, you know, benefit from lessons learned.
Yeah, I feel like we've had consistently good work with the, with the Waters. Okay, I forgot my question. Sorry.
Just from my own background knowledge, how are these streets prioritized?
It's generally, generally, you know, it's an in-house process. We have a continual list of, of projects, capital improvement projects and street projects. There was a professional, I forget what they call it, a professional engineering study a couple of years ago that they went and they drove all the roads, and they gave us, you know, a list of priorities. We use that, and then visual inspections and.
Are you coordinating with other utilities?
Yes.
Okay.
How far ahead is your long-term plan? I mean, we know we're going to have to do roads. How far ahead do you plan?
Right now, we've got about a five-year plan. We'd like to expand that and, you know, a one-to-end list of all the projects. But yeah, that's, you know, that's a good question. We have about five years' worth of backlog right now, but there's many more projects that we haven't, that aren't shovel-ready, that we haven't scoped and got a cost estimate for. But, but that's, we would like to do that in the, in the coming years.
Great questions. All right, and do we have a motion on this, seeing no more discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to award the 2022 Street Improvement Project to Dave and Lana Waters, Inc. at their bid amount of $536,038.74.
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Keef Hoffer and seconded by Rainey.
Spruill?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Dehaven?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Keef Hoffer?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye. All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 7D, sorry. Ordinance number 1309, series 2022, presented by Jeremy Patton, our airport manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So we're here again. The last ordinance we pushed, we stopped it in between the first and second readings. That was 1307, series 2022. This will be 1309, series 2022. We're starting over with a first reading. During the first and second reading of 1307, we made some substantive changes to the lease agreement as per request of the tenant's bank. All right, so all we did was added some assignability phrasing in the assignment clause of the lease agreement. Everything else, the property, the land description, nothing changed. And you guys have in your possession the exhibits for that, the building as well. So none of that has changed. So here we are. We're just, you know, recommending to council the approval of the first reading, and the second reading will be August 9.
And you feel much better about this contract?
Definitely. There's, the new city attorney, we went through and, you know, made some edits and just cleaned up the lease agreement draft a little bit. But again, the substantive changes were as per request of the tenant's bank, specifically. But moving forward, we'll have a cleaner draft to do future lease agreements with. Classic Air Medical is an example of that as well. There were some housekeeping conducted to move forward with the new draft. So we'd like to get the ground broken on this hangar as well as Classics this fall. So with that second reading August 9, we're well on our way to two hangars going up at the same time, hopefully.
Great.
So.
Well, thanks for all your work, Jeremy.
No worries.
Do we have any questions or ready for a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve on first reading ordinance number 1309, series 2022, authorizing and improving a ground lease with Jared and Karen Hanson for construction of an aircraft hangar at the Cortez Municipal Airport, and set a public hearing for August 9, 2022.
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Dehaven and seconded by Keef Hoffer.
Dobree?
Aye.
Keef Hoffer?
Aye.
Spruill?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Dehaven?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to 7E, Amendment to Employment Contract for City Manager Drew Sanders. This will be presented by Patrick Coleman, our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council member.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. At the last council meeting, uh, the council met in executive session to conduct the evaluation of Drew Sanders, the city manager. And, uh, at the conclusion of that meeting, uh, I was asked to prepare an amendment to his employment contract that contained an amendment to his, uh, salary effective on his anniversary date. And, uh, I have done that. Um, it's presented for your, uh, review and consideration. And, uh, as, as no, uh, decisions can be made in executive session, this should be treated as kind of a case of first impression where you're free to, uh, approve this, uh, amendment or approve an amendment with changes, uh, that, that you may decide on, or you can choose not to approve an amendment. But, uh, uh, I believe this reflects the, uh, parameters that I was asked to, uh, prepare and so I present it for your consideration.
Does anyone have any questions or, or comments? Okay, I, I want to just, um, kind of read through, um, basically achievements of, um, our city manager Drew Sanders in the last fourteen months. Um, we, uh, completion of our financial audits is actually on the horizon now. We've been dealing with this for years and, um, with the help of, um, leadership of Drew and the help of our amazing finance department, um, we might actually see this happen this year. Um, also, we're in a great pa- place with our fiber network. Um, we actually have, um, the ability to leverage those assets that we've been putting years and money into. Also, our relations with our, um, other stakeholders are improving. Um, we have a better relationship with the county, with, um, our utilities. I feel like our employee retention and morale is up. We have, we implemented financial policies and we have better checks and balances, more transparency and more public, um, input. Um, we also have a great leadership team that works well together and is, um, going above and beyond. And then, um, what did I write here? Oh, we just, you know, a lot of housekeeping items have happened, cleaning up, you know, contracts and policies, um, and workflows. So I just feel like the city's in a really, a better place and so, thank you, Drew. We appreciate you.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Please.
There's been some comments, uh, that I've heard, why are we giving such a big raise? Number one, the City of Cortez was bismally below that of the cities.
Wait a second. Yeah. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the attached amendment to employment contract for city manager Drew C. Sanders. With, I, I'll leave it there. Does that work? Okay.
Yes.
Second. Uh, motion made by Pro Tem Yaasi and seconded by Dehaven.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Spruul.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.
All right. Okay, so we'll, uh, move on to eight, uh, on the agenda. We have no draft resolution ordinances. Um, do we have, so we'll move on to nine. Do we have a city attorney report?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, uh, I'd just like to kind of update you, uh, in addition to kind of some day-to-day things that I've been working on, two of the main projects that, uh, are coming up for, for my office are, uh, code amendments to the land use code and we're looking at, uh, potentially up to four, uh, code changes that, uh, will be, uh, going to the Planning Commission first and then, uh, if, if they come through that, they, they may end up before you as well. The other large project and it, we're doing it kind of twofold. The, the airport has their own set of contracts and so I'm going through those and going to be trying to clean up the forms and then looking at some of the previous contracts where we've had some, uh, uh, essentially typographical errors that turned out to be substantive and we, we're going to need to remedy those. So that, that'll be coming before you, uh, in the near future. And then the other, uh, through the General Services Department, uh, they maintain a lot of the contracts for the whole city and, and the form contracts, so I'm kind of starting a comprehensive review of those contracts to, uh, make any recommendations for changes that, that may be appropriate. And, uh, so that, that's kind of what's going to be occupying my time in addition to day-to-day requests for legal services from council or staff. Thank you.
Let's me, sorry. Okay, so then, uh, city, number 10 on the agenda, city managers' report?
Yeah, I do. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, following the items of, uh, or in current issues occurring in the City of Cortez. First, as Brian mentioned, the Sligo Street Reconstruction Project, uh, project is all but complete. Uh, I was informed that, uh, the final touches are being put on the roadway and it will be open as early as tomorrow. Uh, I'd like to really thank D and L Construction and the City Streets Department for their quality and expedition's work to get this done on time. And I'd just like to remind the Council and the community, this was a total rebuild. This wasn't just a, a paving project, so they really did good work on this. And as many of you know, Region Nine has agreed to oversee the Southwest COG for the foreseeable future. Uh, Region Nine did hold their board meeting here in Cortez last week and at that meeting, it was decided that the annual dues for the Southwest COG and, uh, Region Nine will now be rolled into one. Uh, the Region Nine decision was ratified by the Southwest COG Board as well. Uh, what this really means for the city is that we stand to save approximately nine thousand dollars total for our 2023 dues between the two organizations. So this is good news for us. Some additional highlights of note, hiring is improved in the Parks and Recreation Department. They've hired a front desk clerk and are fully staffed in the parks, but only for about another two weeks because school is restarting. Uh, they're also losing some lifeguards in two weeks for the same reason. The airport is installing remote, uh, access weather cameras as an additional aid to pilots. Uh, coal fire continues, uh, their aviation-based fire suppression in the area and they've successfully put out many small blazes before they could become major fires, some of those up on Mesa Verde. Uh, the refuse department is now fully staffed and most of the water infrastructure replacement work has been done on the Mildred Project, as Brian mentioned. Uh, but I'd also like to point out that that has not been an easy job for them. Uh, they're, you know, even though they're, they're still on track, this has been exceptionally difficult for them. So we, uh, just ask for your indulgence on that. And then, Mayor, I would like to do an employee highlight, with your permission? Uh, I'd like to highlight Donna Murphy. Uh, she was nominated by our Linda Smith. Donna joined the City of Cortez staff in January of 2022 and has brought with her a wealth of experience from her previous position with the town of Mankas. With that experience, she jumped in with both feet and has taken on many different projects for the City of Cortez. Donna has taken full responsibility for liquor licensing and was, as well as special event permits. She has attended city council meetings and is a great asset to the various duties that are required prior to, during, and after meetings. In the next few months, Donna and Linda will be taking turns attending city council meetings and which will result in another person trained and ready for any city council, city meeting, uh, needing clerk attendance. Over the past six months, Donna has been instrumental in helping to complete much-needed filing of important city documents, indexing council minutes, agenda preparation, completing the monthly calendar, participating in, uh, the, for her first election, and is now a member of the Wellness Committee, which is more than meets the eye in coordination and tracking, and is currently working on the new city fee schedule. Donna has completed her third year of the Colorado Municipal Clerks Institute and is working towards her certification. Donna's enthusiasm and kindness to everyone is evident in all she does. We are thankful she is here and the city is very lucky to have her. Thank you, Donna. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to 11, City Council Committee Reports. Uh, A is the mayor's report on the workshop. All right, in our workshop today, we got to, uh, we were introduced to Noah Peterson, our engineering intern, who is sadly leaving us next week. Um, but hopefully we'll see him again next year and if not him, another great intern to fill his shoes. And then, uh, Sam Light from SIRS, our Colorado Insurance Risk? Our Risk Pool, um, came and gave a presentation, um, and he hit on his suggestions for success. Commit to the role of public official, commit to supporting the city structure, honor transparency, commit to ethical conduct, commit to providing due process, and embrace wise leadership. Always an informative, um, presentation and, uh, this is like my third copy of this book now. So, I'll be bringing those.
You get a new one every year, so.
Okay. And then there was no council discussion. All right, so that's it for the workshop report. Um, we'll move on to other board reports. Do any council members have reports they'd like to share with us? We, we can start on, on Dennis's end?
Uh, did have a golf, uh, committee report. Uh, uh, we had a, a meeting and, um, they're doing well financially. They're ahead of last year. Uh, they think a lot of it is because Pinion Hills in, uh, New Mexico is closed, but we have a lot of out-of-town guests golfing in our golf course. And on their wish list, they, uh, would like to see a nursery so that they could repair some of these greens. Oh, and the dog issue, uh, they're going to strongly advise not to have dogs on the golf course, but if they do, they want to remind them of the city ordinance that says all dogs must be on leash.
Last Friday, I attended the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, uh, meeting and, uh, we started with, uh, some updates on the South Park project. The workforce housing aspect of that is, um, complicated, but ultimately a, a very important part of the project. And I'll, I'll just say that we have not forgotten about the, um, pocket parks that are on the south side. So, uh, there will be hopefully some pretty exciting changes coming up for those as well, um, in the meantime. We had a Fourth of July update and it was kind of a mixed bag. A really good thing was that they moved the launch site to the north side of the park, which opened up a lot of places for people to, um, safely watch the fireworks. Um, they desperately tried, uh, a new traffic egress, uh, plan at the end of the evening and there's still some work, um, to do on that. And I think, you know, it's kind of a, a mixed bag. I think, uh, you know, some people just, um, didn't pay attention to some of the signage and that sort of thing, so that was, uh, a problem. In the past, in, uh, May and June, there was some vandalism at the pickleball courts, but, uh, just some of the common sense measures, like locking the gates in the back, no vandalism has occurred, uh, since then. And then, uh, we just had a, a very extensive, uh, reporting out of, of pretty much every aspect of, um, Creighton's job and, uh, all of the things that are, um, on his plate right now is actually a really impressive, you can look at it, it's front, back. The guy has a lot going on and he's definitely on top of it, so, um, so that's all I have for that.
Matt, can I ask a good question? With those, um, Porter Johns by the pickleball courts, I noticed they moved them, so there, are they only supposed to be accessible to the pickleballers?
Um, I don't know if that's the case. I think it's just.
That's generally the intent. There is another restroom within a hundred yards right there to the north.
Okay.
The, uh, Cortez Public Arts Committee is, uh, in the process of, uh, reaching out to artists, musicians, craftspeople, uh, in order to form and build a creative district here in this area. And, um, now that we have, uh, including the Cortez Cultural Center Gallery, we have three art galleries in town now, which is a quantum leap and we're very optimistic about where we're going from here.
On, um, sorry, on July 13th, I attended the Bridge Emergency Shelter Board Meeting. Um, like you guys heard from Teresa Wilson when she came, uh, last time, she's taking over the executive director role for the bridge. Um, she's been with the bridge for a long time as the shelter manager and we're excited for her to step up and she's getting a lot of mentoring on, um, taking over those new responsibilities. The bridge is currently working through, um, some grant audits and almost wrapped up with that. Um, most of the staff, except for one person who, um, is having a, a child, will be returning next winter, so that's great news. And we've had two people transition, um, out of the temper, or the upstairs apartments into permanent housing. Um, the finances are basically the same as they were last year and are in good shape. And, uh, there's two committees that are part of the Bridge Board that are reviewing, um, our financial policies as well as our general policies and procedures.
Um, the Historic Preservation Board was canceled for July, but the one thing I did have of note is that in addition to our normal August meeting, the Historic Preservation Board will also be meeting with, uh, History Colorado to, to talk about the deliverables for the auto tourism grant survey that, um, I think we approved at our last meeting. It may have been the one before that.
All right, I don't have any, um, reports, but, uh, Mesa Verde Country, their first meeting, or their next meeting is not until September, so. Okay, um, seeing that's the end of board reports, um, other items of business, we have no executive session tonight. Thirteen, our second public participation. There's no limit to the number of speakers and no overall time limit. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once and may not cede time to another commenter. Do we have any commenters out in the public? All right, then I'll use this time to summarize emails we've gotten that like to be part of our public record. The first one comes from, um, Mindy Nelson, um, Road N, out in the county. Um, her comment basically is concerns with our library director and then brings up a question about transaction fees on marijuana purchases. Another commenter brought that up as well. Um, so just to comment on the transaction fees, this is something that council has already talked about and considered, adding a transaction fee for every purchase at marijuana shops. Um, we had a meeting with the shops last year to discuss this and we, um, our takeaway was that it was not a good time to do this. Um, and we, um, yeah, we decided to not pursue that any further. All right, next comment is from, uh, Lynette Ward. I don't see an address. And she brought up just concerns with pride-related events. Um, another comment, um, from Tiffany Gray. Her, uh, concerns with the library and pride-related events and then also asked about the marijuana transaction fees. And then, um, uh, a comment from Karen Cheek, um, Southern Bluffs, uh, subdivision. And, and then she was curious about, um, why such a high increase to our city manager, which I think we addressed, um, in our comments, uh, when approving that contract change. Um, another comment is from Brenda O'Brien. Um, and she brings up concerns about city spending and opposed to a raise for our city manager. Our next comment is from Richard Zo- Zoistowski.
Our next comment is from Richard Zowistowski. And he brings up concerns with city spending and increase for our city manager. And then, our last comment to read into, make up a public record is from Linda Pissell, Pa- Pissell? Sorry, Lisa Pissell. And she brings up concerns about raise for city manager and city spending. Yeah, and city spending. All right. And then, if people in the public would like to re, know what these comments are verbatim, they will be part of public record. Second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll close this public comment section, and then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion made by Yaasi and seconded by Keefhoffer.
Rainey.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Yaasi.
Aye.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Spruul.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.